Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is Monday, December 16, 2024. This meeting is called to order. For our invocation, we will have a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki. Joe Reiser. George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins. Annie Brown.
Here.
I would move to excuse councilpersons Reiser, Wilkins, and Onuki.
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes and they are excused. Next, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item 16, a closed session, and to limit public comments to three minutes instead of five minutes.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I am not going to support the motion because I don't like giving residents no notice whatsoever that their public comment will be cut almost in half. This is de facto changing the agenda contrary to our agenda protocol, and I cannot support that.
I plan to vote in favor of limiting it to three minutes. With so many members absent, we have no intention of doing any major legislating tonight, and so we can follow the standard that the rest of the state does and hold it to three minutes.
Okay. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
The motion passes. Moving on, community update. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a number of items for the community update. The first is the Mayor's Service Award, the recipient for 2024. And for many of you who may not know, this is a resurrection of an older award that used to be given out once a year. And this, the recipient for 2024 is Jennifer Sistrunk, Executive Director of the South Haven Visitors Bureau.
Thank you. According to the plaque in the hallway, this service award was started in 2002. The last award was 2011, so we are bringing this back. And I'm proud that Jennifer is the first Black recipient of this award in South Haven. This award is presented to Jennifer Sistrunk for her tireless commitment to enriching the lives of everyone in our community. Jennifer Sistrunk has made significant contributions to our community through her leadership in key projects such as the Phoenix Street Kayak Launch, Sesquicentennial Trail, South Haven Bike Rack Project, and the Visit South Haven Billboard Sets on I-196. These initiatives have brought inclusive access to South Haven's natural resources, celebrated South Haven's history, and provided the opportunity for local artists to showcase their artwork in a functional way throughout the city. Jennifer is an active member of the Michigan Association of Convention and Visitors Bureaus, South Haven Diversity Coalition, Tourism Coalition of Michigan, and Women Who Care, dedicating countless hours to help grow the local economy and support local organizations. Jennifer also spends time volunteering on various boards and committees such as the West Michigan Tourist Association, South Haven Area Recreation Authority, Greater South Haven Area Community Foundation Scholarship Committee, and she serves as President of the South Haven Center for the Arts Board of Directors. Her efforts have been recognized through prestigious awards, including the CVB Star of the Year by the Michigan Restaurant and Lodging Association, and being featured in the Forty Under Forty Awards Series by Moody on the Market. As an artist, Jennifer has further enriched our community with her recent exhibition, Soul Scapes, A Visual Odyssey of South Haven's Black Heritage, which featured her original artwork in collaboration with the Black History Leadership Society, Gail Patterson Gladney, and Bishop Dorothy Sherrad. Through these efforts, Jennifer has inspired the community to express themselves, work together for the greater good, and to enjoy the beauty that South Haven has to offer. The City of South Haven and I, Mayor Annie Brown, are proud and honored to bestow the Mayor's Service Award upon Jennifer Sistrunk.
Well, Mayor, come on down to the proclamation and take a picture behind that. Anybody else you'd like to have in your picture with you?
I wasn't prepared for a speech or anything. I just took a picture.
One more. Bishop, if you wanted to get up there. Did you want to get a picture?
Yes.
Did you want to be in the picture?
I'm kind of hidden.
There you go. Yes. Excuse me. Okay. Would you want us to look at you? Did you want Gail?
Yes, please.
Thank you. All right. Jeff, you may have to find your window.
I didn't want to ruin the picture.
All right. One, two, three. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation for South Haven Superintendent Kevin Schooly, who is retiring. He is the former South Haven Public Schools Superintendent, and we have a proclamation for him that is going to be read. Oh, did I give you?
I have copy.
Oh, okay.
Was that?
Share with me because I can't find it. Got it.
Okay.
I just have one story to tell about Kevin before we read this. And one time Kevin was visiting Maple Grove School, and a little kid came up to him and said, "Are you Mrs. Cross's boss?" And she was the principal at that time. And in his humble way, Kevin said, "Well, yeah, but, you know, I work with her. We work together." And he looked up at Kevin and said, "Will you fix the pencil sharpener?"
You start. Okay. Whereas Superintendent Kevin Schooly is retiring after 15 years of exemplary service to the South Haven Public Schools and a distinguished 34-year career in special education, consistently demonstrating that he had a heart for the students who need him most, and...
Whereas Kevin Schooly considered relationship building to be the most essential skill of his career, fostering meaningful connections with students, staff, and the community, and...
Whereas Kevin successfully led multimillion-dollar bond campaigns, guided them from voter approval through the building process in both South Haven and Waterfleet Schools, and...
Whereas Kevin firmly believed in the potential of all students to learn and succeed, offering flexible opportunities to excel, including his work as an alternative education teacher and his instrumental role in bringing the WAY program, widening advancements for youth to both Waterfleet and South Haven, and...
Whereas Kevin earned both a bachelor's and a master's degree in education and served as an educator-principal for 15, educator, comma, principal, and for 15 years as superintendent, all while prioritizing his family, his wife of 34 years, Lori, and his children, Nick, Jackson, and Catherine.
Now, therefore, I, Mayor Annie Brown, on behalf of the South Haven community, express our heartfelt gratitude and deep appreciation for Kevin Schooly's exceptional leadership and dedication over the years. We wish him all the best in his well-deserved retirement.
Thank goodness Jen didn't come up with this huge speech. I was worried she was going to...
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want Lori in there?
Lori, sure.
Come on. Jeff, you want to be in it?
Sure. Yeah. Actually, Mrs. Sistrunk, did you come up here?
Yeah.
My first year was 1993, and Mrs. Sistrunk and I worked together.
Oh, my gosh, I love that!
So ironically enough, she was here. One more sometimes.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you all very much. One story I could say about Kevin. Having been here for 27 years teaching, and then I also have served as the union president, sat through countless negotiations, and, you know, helped teachers with different issues. I could say Kevin saved South Haven Public Schools. We were in a very toxic place. Teachers were not trusting the administration. His calm, cool, collected demeanor, delivery, put everyone at ease. We always felt that, you know, we knew he had our back. We knew we could trust him. He reversed the climate here, saved the South Haven Public Schools.
And last, but certainly not least, we have a proclamation for our amazingly fabulous clerk, Megan Keiker.
Whereas Megan Keiker, as the city clerk of South Haven, Michigan, has demonstrated exceptional dedication and tireless work during the 2024 election season, ensuring the integrity and success of the electoral process, and...
Whereas throughout this election season, Megan has worked countless late nights and long, long hours to oversee the organization, administration, and execution of all aspects of the election, handling every detail with remarkable skill and professionalism, and...
Whereas Megan's leadership, unwavering commitment, and attention to detail have been instrumental in ensuring that the election process in South Haven ran smoothly, efficiently, and in full accordance with the law, and...
Whereas the successful conduct of this election would not have been possible without the invaluable contributions of the dedicated election workers who spend their time, energy, and efforts, ensuring the voters had the opportunity to participate in a free and fair election, and...
Whereas the teamwork and dedication of Megan Keiker and the election workers have truly made a significant impact on our community, fostering confidence in the electoral process and upholding the democratic value we hold so dear.
Now, therefore, I, Mayor Annie Brown, on behalf of the South Haven community, do hereby extend our heartfelt thanks and deepest appreciation to Megan Keiker for her outstanding leadership and hard work during the 2024 election season. We also express our gratitude to the election workers, whose efforts have also made this election a success. Their dedication reflects the very best of our community's commitment to democracy. And now it is time for an update from Van Buren County Commissioner, District One, Gail Patterson Gladney.
Hello, everybody. And I am so happy to be here and hear all the proclamations and the service awards. Jennifer Sistrunk, well deserved, all that she's done. Kevin Schooly, which of course is wonderful. And I used to be on your community advisory board. And I also, another tidbit, watched their cats once when they used to go on vacation. I had some side jobs. Okay. And also, Megan Keiker, all the work that you did. Thank you. So it is just wonderful to hear good news at the end of the year, and I just think that's great. The mayor's award, I haven't heard about that, I think, before, so that's great. I just wanted to update you on a few things. The Committee of the Whole, which we call COW, and the Board of Commissioners Meeting, BOC, that was scheduled for December 24th, has been canceled in observance of the holiday season. Usually, the COW and the BOC meet on Tuesdays, on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, at 1:00. The COW is followed immediately afterwards by the BOC. The commissioners approved a resolution in support of the Palisades' deployment of SMRs, which is the Small Modular Reactors. And of course, safety is a key concern for everyone, and especially Holtech, and then the U.S. Nuclear Regulatory Commission, which has high safety standards that must be met before the reopening. So far, at this time, about 550 full-time workers have been hired by the plant. Their goal is a little over 600 to be hired, which will be a great boom for our economy. If the reopening takes place as planned in, I think, around October 2025, it will be the first in U.S. history to reopen as a nuclear power plant that was, has started to be decommissioned. So all eyes are on our area. The commissioners heard updates from the Veterans Service Department, David Kriski, who's the director. And he stated that if anyone in our area, our different districts, want to have a coffee and information session for veterans, to please let him know. I've hosted one of those coffees at the senior services several years ago and at COVID last year. If you know veterans in the area who would like to find out more information about the services that are available, please let me know. We also, as commissioners, approved different capital improvement projects. We updated the sheriff's administration. We approved the JL HVAC project. Also, we approved the roof replacement of the Health Services West and the DHHS roof replacement. Also, the courthouse facade repair. There will be an oath ceremony for the swearing-in of the recently elected officials, December 27th, that's Friday at 3:00 p.m. And it's going to be in, of course, Paw Paw Courthouse in courtroom number one. And I have a press release, and I think I sent that to you by email, too. I just want to let you know, all the Board of Commissioners, all seven districts, will be sworn in, plus our local resident, the Honorable Kathleen Brickley, as the 36th Circuit Court Judge, probate court judge, Honorable Susan Metzger, and our sheriff, Daniel Abbott, the prosecutor, Susan Zweiderman, our clerk, Susie Rome, the treasurer, Tricia Nesbit, register of deeds, Paul DeYoung, and drain commissioner, Joe Parman. Also, our surveyor, Charles Losse. I read everyone's name because sometimes people are not aware of who the different elected officials are. You can always go onto our website to find out more information, vanburencountymi.gov. And I would give this to you. And our last update, the Domestic Violence Coalition of Van Buren County came to our meeting and gave us this little newsletter for December. They wanted to remind everybody that they are accepting donations of new and gently-used toys and books through December 20th, which is coming up soon. Also, there's contact information in the newsletter, and there's 24-hour, seven days-a-week phone line in case there's a crisis. During the holidays, sometimes is when there's an uptick in domestic violence. And so I have enough for everybody to have that information. And happy holidays. I hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And congratulations on your election.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Let's move again. It is now time for public comment for items on the agenda, excluding items scheduled for public hearing, and you have three minutes. If there are no comments...
Lisa Croupiers, 561 Indiana Avenue. I am wanting to speak on item nine under Old Business, the zoning ordinance. I realize that signs is part of the ordinance, and I would like to speak about electronic This seems to now be being allowed. Phoenix Street on Broadway is an example of this type of signage and violation. The Chamber of Commerce is using these blinking signs, South Haven Memorial Library. These signs are visual blight and pollution. They are also a health hazard. If you have been to movies lately or any kind of a performance, they usually have a blinking lights warning because it is a health hazard to certain individuals. It is particularly this type of situation for residents who are in close proximity. In the past, it was neon signs. Now, it's these electronic blinking, strobing signs. These are not pleasant in a neighborhood like ours or in a community like ours. Kitchen Tribes also has a roof sign. Those are illegal in the ordinance. When tourists come here, not to mention the residents, but including the residents, but when tourists come here, they are looking to escape this type of thing, not to see more of it. No enforcement exists. It has been reported on several occasions. I have seen these reports go into the city staff. Why do we, and no enforcement exists. Why do we have a code enforcement officer, and why is he not doing his job? The job of the city manager is to guarantee the enforcement of all city ordinances...
You have one minute.
...including those regarding signage as we are speaking of. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we will move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through K?
I move to approve consent agenda items A through K.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, the city council will be asked to approve ordinance 1096, an ordinance to adopt the new zoning ordinance for the City of South Haven. Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 1096, an ordinance to adopt the new zoning ordinance for the City of South Haven.
Support.
Any discussion?
Do we need to also rescind the previous motion?
That's correct. In the recommendation, it talks about the motion to rescind, and the background, it kind of explains what happened there, which is we had the new zoning ordinance, and somehow between just the different agencies working on this, between city staff and city attorney, we needed to actually have a number of ordinance that adopted this new zoning ordinance. And so the city attorney recommended that we consider a motion to rescind the previous zoning ordinance approval and approve the ordinance 1096 to approve the new zoning ordinance for the City of South Haven.
Would you like to amend that?
Then I would like to amend my motion. I would like to make, I would move to rescind the zoning ordinance that was passed at our previous meeting, and then move to approve, I lost my place, there we are, ordinance 1096, an ordinance to adopt the new zoning ordinance for the City of South Haven.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I would move to change, to modify the motion. I would move to, I believe you said you would move to rescind our previous approval, and the motion should have been to rescind the previous zoning ordinance approval, and approve an ordinance to adopt the new zoning ordinance of the City of South Haven.
So the way, what I'm hearing is, just correcting my grammar mistake.
Okay.
And so Megan, have all that.
I have amended to rescind the zoning ordinance that was previously passed at a meeting, or a previous meeting, and to approve the ordinance 1096. That's what I had as the amendment.
And so I would move to amend that, to strike the part about rescinding at a previous meeting and replace it such that the motion would say, "To rescind the previous zoning ordinance approval and to approve an ordinance to adopt the new zoning ordinance for the City of South Haven," exactly as it's worded in the recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted...
Mary?
Yes, thank you. I am supporting the new zoning ordinance with cautious optimism. So over the past year, I have found substantive changes that were not adopted, identified and fully discussed by the Planning Commission, with one change identified after the Planning Commission had recommended acceptance to the city council, that being the CBD parking issue. And I thank staff for implementing the changes from... And I thank staff for implementing the changes from the motions at the December 2nd meeting, where two of those motions were part of the staff report recommendations, requiring, you know, removal of the required two parking spaces and that for every STR dwelling unit, including the CBD parking issue. Luckily, this is a living document, so if other issues arise, they can hopefully be quickly addressed and allow us to move forward with a balance within our community. And I would encourage staff to create a checklist for any construction, future construction, with the changes for lot coverage. I think it would be very helpful and very transparent to have that as part of the record. That would include lot coverage, green space setbacks, height, and projections into the yard that would look at leased eaves, decks, and porches.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
The motion passes.
So, that was, yep, that was the, so that was the vote on the amendment, and now we'll need a vote on the actual, the underlying motion.
Okay.
Okay. So, we're now, we're voting again. We have that motion second. Okay? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That passes, too.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to New Business. The city council...
If I, I could, sorry, I put this in the wrong spot. As part of the zoning...
We're moving on. We voted, discussion's over. Next, the city council will be asked to receive a presentation from Doug Vradaveld of Vradaveld Hefner LLC, and to accept the fiscal year 2023-2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Good evening.
All right.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Tonight, I'll just go over briefly the, I think the books are in front of you, page you through the books, and there's a couple slides that we can go through. But first of all, this was an annual comprehensive financial report, which received the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting last year, and we believe it is set up to, again, receive it for this year. But it takes about a year-long process to get that award. So, congratulations on that. It is divided into some different sections. The introduction section, the financial section, and statistical section are the key ones. The introduction is basically a letter from city staff, kind of explaining some things within the city going on, with a few other organization chart and so forth. And the statistical section way in the back is also presented by staff, but has the same information that is in the, in the financial statements for 10 years. So, you can go back and look over 10 years of information there. So, I'm going to concentrate on the financial section. So, on page one, that's the page that's on our letterhead, the Independent Auditor's Report. This is after doing all of the work and verifying numbers and so forth, and making sure the financial statements meet GAAP requirements. We come, form an opinion on the financial statements, and it says in the second paragraph from the top of page one, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city." And that's a good, clean opinion, certainly what you want to have when you have an audit done. The next several pages over is management discussion and analysis, which, again, is a more written explanation about the financial statements. If you look on page five, the financial highlights, this gives you a good rundown of all the activity going on in the city. A lot of, lot of, there's about 20 capital, big capital projects and so forth listed there that have been completed during the year or in progress. And if you go to pages 15 through 17, this, we get back to the first set of financial The first set of financial statements are on a full accrual basis of accounting, so they're, they're very comprehensive and meant to look like a regular business. They include such things as all of your capital assets, and your long-term debt, your pension liability and so forth. And it's divided into basically three different sections, the governmental activities, business-type activities, and the component units. The business-type activities are your electric water, sewer, and other, the Marina, Black River Park, those are your business-type activities. And the governmental activities encompasses all of the rest, the general fund, the debt service, capital projects, and so forth. And if you look right at the bottom of page 15, I kind of concentrate here on the governmental activities. You can see there's a positive unrestricted net position of 3.2 million. So, it's positive with all the debt and everything else recorded. There's many communities that have a negative number there because their pension is underfunded. Yours is funded better than other communities, so you have a positive there. So, that's, that's good. That's, I mentioned pensions because that's what kind of drives that in most communities. The, the capital assets are kind of offset by the debt, but it's that pension liability that really got a lot of people into trouble there. And then pages 15, just go to page 17, kind of look at your bottom line here. But the change in net position is about five lines up. It says, "Change in net positions for governmental activities, 2.4 million. For business-type activities, it's a negative 4.9 million." I'll show you why. When we talk about proprietary funds, basically, the vast majority of that is caused by a one-time transfer to the South Haven Water Sewer Authority. So, I'll discuss that when we look at the proprietary funds here. And Kate, if you want to pull up the first slide there? Okay, this, this is your governmental activities again, and it's kind of a picture that shows the expenses compared to your direct or program revenues for each function of the city. So, the program revenues are things that are directly attributable to, to the various areas. For example, public safety would be inspection fees that get applied there. And what this really shows you is what is being covered by your indirect revenues or your general revenues, which are your property taxes, your state shared revenues, and those kinds of things. So, that's kind of what makes up the differences between the program revenues and the expenses. And then the next slide. And this is just a pie chart of, for all of the governmental activities, where does the revenue come from? And you can see the vast majority of it, 55% is property tax, 17% different charges for services, operating grants, and state shared revenue, you can see, is a very small amount there. And what I, what I do when I prepare for this is I compare this pie chart to last year's pie chart, and I almost couldn't see the difference. I had to move really fast to see any of the, any of the numbers changed, but they're almost identical. So, the property taxes was 55% last year as well. So, so it's not, not much change, which is good. The next set of financial statements starts on page 18, and these are on the modified accrual basis. It's more of a short-term focus, and these are more what you'd be accustomed to seeing when you see your budget to annual, budget to actual reports, either, you know, monthly or quarterly, or however often they're presented. But if you look on page 18, this is the balance sheet. You can see there, there's the general fund on the left, and then the non-major funds, which, there's a lot of detail in the back. On page 66, it begins, that detail out all of the non-major funds. But we'll concentrate on the general fund here. Just a couple things on page 18. About midway down the page, you can see unearned revenue of 104,000. Not a huge amount, but that is your remaining ARPA money that has to be spent. It has to be earmarked by the end of this month, and it has to be spent by December of '26. And then, your unassigned fund balance in the general fund is 4.7 million. So, that's a very good level, and we'll see some slides on that in just a second. And if you flip ahead to page 20, again, this is the income statement now for the general fund and the other funds. And you can see the bottom line, three lines up, in the general fund, it increased 1.5 million for the year. So, very good increase, and expenditures were under control, and the, and the, you receive property tax equivalent payments from the proprietary or the business-type funds, as well as revenues have been in good shape. So, there's a few slides that kind of show the general fund here. Shows it a little bit nicer for you than numbers. But this is general fund, the revenues, your property taxes, state shared, and charges for services. You see property taxes are steadily increasing with taxable values. State revenues is up a little bit because you received a state grant this year of about 300,000 or so. So, that bumped the state revenue up. That was a one-time grant. And then, other is up quite a bit the last two years. This year in particular is up because interest rates have risen. So, your interest earnings are in that other category, and that's up by quite a bit this year. I didn't write down what the amount was. And then also, if you jump ahead in your book for general fund to page 63, this is your budget and actual report. So, the budgeted versus the actual expenditures. And I just wanted to point out on page 63 that the expenditures, one thing we do have to report to the state is where you're over-budget. And there was only a few very minor, we call them a minor overage because they're less than 10% of the total. So, they are reported to the state, but the state won't get too excited about them because they're under that threshold, so. But there's only three of them in the public safety area there. And then, going off notes here, there's one other thing I wanted to show you. On page 55, if you go back a couple, yeah, your net change and fund balance on page 55, you can see, this is, again, a budget to actual, it's a more summarized report. Your bottom line was budgeted to be a positive 802,000. It actually came in at a positive 1.577, so just over 1.5 million, which, which is a positive of 775,000. So, it came in better than expected, better than budgeted, which is good. That's probably, I didn't go back and look, but probably from delayed projects and that kind of thing, which often drives that. Okay. More slides. What's the next one? Property tax revenue, this is just a longer-term graph. You can see, again, it's been increasing steadily over the last 10 or so years. Now, what's the next one, Kate? And this is the expenditures by function. You can see, let's see, I made a couple notes here. Public safety, the increase, there was a lot of staff turnover in your public safety department, which you're probably already aware of. So, that drove that up a little bit. And in both public works, they're down, you can see, and culture and recreation is down. In the previous year, there was a couple of pretty significant projects in those areas which drove it, drove it up in the previous year. So, that's not a repeat kind of a thing, it's just a one-time capital item. Okay, and then the next one? This is a thing we kind of look at. Those left-hand columns should be percentages, but I couldn't get that figured out quite before the meeting. But you can see, this is expenditures in each of the areas as a percentage of the total expenditures. And we kind of watch this to see what the trends are. And you can see, overall, you know, public safety, the top green line there, runs right about 50% of the total expenditures in the fund for the year, every year running, and the other category goes up a little bit. So, just things we look at, nothing unusual that we were, we were overly concerned about here. And this is the general fund, fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers. So, what drove this way up this year? The fund balance increased by 1.5 million, like I mentioned, and then all of that is an unassigned. So, the unassigned number that we look at in the general fund, which means not, it hasn't been set aside yet, that's actually up quite a bit, so that drives this percentage of expenditure number up. So, it's almost 50% at this point. So, that's good financial position, but there's money there. And then, oh, that's the electric fund. We'll get to, get to that on page 22 and 24 of the report. This is your proprietary funds, and this is where I wanted to talk about that other thingy I mentioned. If you just go to page 23, it's the income statement. So, the contract with the Water Sewer Authority was, was adjusted during the past fiscal year and changed, which caused, caused some differences in the way things were accounted for. And as part of that contract resettlement, I guess I'll call it, there was a one-time contractual payment to Shawza, which is right in the middle of the page. And it's basically, that is your prior-year depreciation adjustment amounts. So, those were given back to Shawza as part of this, this whole settlement. And if we look at these next three graphs, you can see, this is the change in net position. And electric fund has been very steady the last several years. And then the next one is your water fund. And what I did is I removed that one-time payment out so we could look at it, you know, more, otherwise, we'll have a really strange, big, huge jump in there for the next five years. But for 24, you can see, the actual change in net position is down only slightly from previous years, and in the sewer fund, it's the same thing. It's actually up from what it was in 2023. So, overall, not, not a bad report there for the proprietary funds either. And then, just a couple footnotes. I already pointed out footnote two, where we report to the state the over-expenditure, which is, again, very minor. And note number five, which is capital. Sorry, I didn't write the page numbers down. Page 40. And just by way of pointing out the significance of the capital projects that the city has been undertaking during the year, a little over 3 million spent out of the governmental activities, a little, about 6 million spent in the business-type activities. So, there's, there's a lot going on there. And then debt was another one I like to always just point out. There was no new debt issued during the year. And that's note seven on page 45. It starts and goes on for a few pages, but there was no new debt. All of the debt is being paid according to the payment schedules that were set up for them. So, all, all good there. And then, in addition to the regular audit, way in the very back of the report is what's called the single audit. It's not too exciting here for the city because it only involves the outstanding USDA community facilities bonds in this case. So, we have to look at ongoing compliance requirements, and the USDA requires that to be considered a single audit. Even though the money was expended years ago, the outstanding balance is just over 1.2 million on those bonds, so we have to continue to look at them every year to make sure they're meeting compliance requirements. That's all I was going to go over with you.
Okay.
If there's questions, I'd be more than happy to attempt to answer them.
George?
I just want to say thank you to you, and also thank you to Michelle Argu, our finance director, with all the hard work that both of you have done for this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you. Mary?
Yes. Yes, thank you for all of this. I do have some questions. So, on page nine of the hard copy, no, actually, I think page 17 is more clear, yes. For the statement of activities, I just, I noticed that there's almost, you know, 2.5 million difference between ours beginning balance and the net position of end of year. So, to me, that means our expenses exceeded our revenues.
That's correct. You're looking at the third column over there?
Yes, for the total.
Yes. So, the bulk of that is that $4.9 million decrease in business-type activities, which is, again, completely related to that one-time transfer back to Shawza.
Okay.
In the proprietary funds, the water and sewer funds.
Right.
So, that's what's really driving that to, to be a loss.
And I guess I'll, that would be questions for Dana Byrd to better understand, you know, if things were being decreased. I mean, the rates continue to increase, and I hear, I'm hearing more and more from residents about the increased rates and between water, sewer, and electric, so.
This is, this is tied to the depreciation of the assets that we have, and the city can't convey away the assets. They have to be leased to Shawza. And the city, under the previous agreement, were keeping the depreciation, and that was determined to have been, supposed to have been transferred to Shawza. So, that's what has been transferred, is just the depreciation. This really is not about the rates, this is about the depreciation of the, of the assets that were being held by the city that should have been conveyed to Shawza.
And then, the graph that you had for public safety, so it's my understanding, the public safety would be Shays, also Police Department, and that the program income would not be just inspections, but, you know, we provide police to the township. And so, that would be that smaller bar.
That would also be in there, yeah.
Yeah, so, and then...
It also include parking tickets as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a more detailed budget for the public safety of all the expenses they have and things like that, other than this overview?
I'm not sure how far you want to get into the weeds, but there are separate funds between Narcotics Village, between the Police Fund, which is a general fund, as well as our contributions to Shays, which I said is part of a twenty-five, over twenty-five-year agreement that is a mixture, or that is a formula that's based on population and taxable value. I tend to not go into those details because really, that's outside of council's purview.
Okay. And so Schedule Two.
But before we move away from public safety, I think it's important to note that public safety is always going to be your largest expenditure as a municipality. Would you agree with that, Doug?
Yes, yes. And you could see that the one graph I had up there was about fifty percent of the general fund expense for each year.
And those costs continue to go up?
Yeah, because you have collective bargaining agreements, and you have adjustments to that, you have pension liabilities that you have to fund. So yes, those do go up because you're funding the people who provide the service. This isn't a product, we don't provide a product, we provide service.
And how often do we redo the agreement with the township for the services we provide?
I'd have to go back and look.
In looking at Schedule Two and Schedule Four, for the twenty twenty-four years.
You're back on page one-ten?
Yes, for Schedule Two and one-twelve for Schedule Four. I was wondering why is there a difference in the property taxes between those two pages for the twenty twenty-four time period? So in Schedule Two, it's seven million, three thirty-five, seven ninety-seven, and Schedule Four, it's seven million, six forty-three, five sixty-four.
So page one-ten is your summary of the statement of net position, which is that full accrual basis financial statement?
Okay.
And page, or Schedule Four, rather, is the modified accrual basis of accounting. So there could be some differences in property taxes there. And more significantly, there's, on the government-wide statement, there's different things that get classified as property taxes that may be classified as, for example, a charge for service in Schedule Four.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And I asked Kate this earlier, and she didn't know the answer, so here I have to... Page one-twenty-four of the report. I did write down the regular page number. For FTEs, I was curious why the manager in twenty fifteen had two point two-five and now is at one point two-two, and the clerk started out with one in twenty fifteen and is now zero point five-one.
I don't know the answer to that one.
Okay.
I'm sure Michelle, who puts the schedule together, would have the backup information for it.
Okay.
But I do not know that off the top of my head on that one.
Okay, and that was, those were the questions I found in the time allowed, because we didn't get this until late Friday.
It is definitely hot off the press.
Right, but it makes it difficult.
Jeff, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you for your report and all your hard work.
Yes, I appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Reminds me why I didn't go into accounting. That's hard.
Well, we do love it, so.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Doug.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, the City Council will be asked to approve a one-year commercial use license agreements for the following entities: My Barefoot Wedding, Bend Yoga, and Sincerely K&amp;J.
Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. We are coming back again for another one-year commercial use license agreement with these three entities. My Barefoot Wedding and Bend Yoga are both on the south end of the North Beach, and Sincerely K&amp;J is a picnic service that operates in Packard Park. We, these are returning events, rather, these are returning vendors for these areas, and there has been an anomalous increase into the annual one-year commercial license use agreements.
Thank you.
I would move to approve a one-year commercial use license agreement with the following entities: My Barefoot Wedding, Be Bend Yoga, and Sincerely K&amp;J.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose? The motion passes and the one-use, commercial use license agreements are approved. Moving on, the City Council will be asked to receive the end-of-the-year presentation, Part Two.
All right. Well, thank you. We're gonna just turn this back on and have our presentation here. So we like to start off our review with the priorities for this year. Again, it should be well noted that these priorities really kind of kick in July one, so this is kind of reflecting some of our work that starts July one. But as you know, we've had a lot of those conversations well before July one. This year, fiscal priority number one was amending the short-term rental ordinances. We've been working on facilitating the draft of amendments to the short-term rental regulatory and zoning ordinance. We did send a zoning ordinance draft to the Planning Commission, which completed their review in November of twenty twenty-four. However, we now have a new direction, so City Council and City Staff will continue to develop amendments to the short-term rental ordinances in twenty twenty-five based on new direction. It's important to also note that while we are in this process, we do have two moratoriums that are currently in place. Our priority number two was housing development. So City Staff has been working to develop housing, which includes the Overton site and other changes needed to support housing in our community. February sixth, we had a housing meeting with Ryan Compatrick about the Overton site. I think just about, I don't know what I'm thinking about, what was that about? But it was the Overton site, and then as well as talking about our area median incomes and things like that. On June eighteenth, we facilitated a meeting with Eagle and the MEDC to specifically talk about the Overton site. You may remember that there's a lot of confusion as to what is occurring on the site, what kind of environmental issues there are. We brought in those experts to talk about what was going on there, and that this is still a very viable site to develop. This meeting and meetings previously, we did adopt and finalize our zoning ordinance, which was a two-year process. I do thank George, as well as the ad hoc community for their work, that was a lot of work and a lot of thought went into that. We are currently in our master plan review. Every five years, the State of Michigan requires that your master plan be reviewed. It does not have to be completely rewritten, but you do need to review it to see if there's any changes that are needed. Here, we are in process with that master plan. We are in talks with the township, South Haven Charter Township, as well as senior services to bring a fifty-three-unit senior housing project to an adjacent lot to the senior services area. So we're still working that thought process out with them. We do know that Trailside Phase Two not only was approved, as Mary had pointed out on a phone call, thank you, Mary, but that we actually saw that they had finally struck ground and were putting in their utilities, so they are starting their Phase Two construction. And currently, staff are working with a variety of different stakeholders to explore infill opportunities around the city. There are some opportunities that I think could work very well, but we also may have to look to get some flexibility in our ordinances to allow for maybe multi-units in certain areas. We are continuing with our housing priorities, as we talked about, Trailside Two with their installation of utilities, starting their housing expansion. We also published the RFP for the Overton site, which I think is we, not only is it still uploaded on the city's website, but I don't believe it comes out until twelve-twenty-four, twelve-twenty-five, it closes twelve-twenty-three. And so we're looking to see what comes out of that. I'm hoping that we have a lot of responses, it's nice to have some opportunities and some choice there. We also secured three hundred thousand dollars in funding from the EPA. Assistant City Manager Michael Natus has been working on drafting the EPA RFP to have us consultant work for you. The EPA has a certain requirements as to how things can get done. That does include this RFP that is published, not only on the city's website, but also with the EPA. And that is to help facilitate this grant funding for brownfield redevelopment plans, which aims to facilitate future economic growth and potentially new housing projects using the Brownfield Act. Priority three, our beach safety improvements, we had a number of things going on here. We did repaint the no swimming, no diving, the city's piers. We did receive an Emily donation from Ryan and Emily Cervatus. We did also receive and install thirteen additional life jacket loner stations. We do have a published, the RFP for lifeguard services was down last week. We did receive eight or nine proposals that should be coming back to the City Council in January, the first meeting in January. We also have beach safety at Toucha Truck. We are continuing to work with King Company to install the pier gates. They assure us that they can install them, but we've frustratingly thought they could be installed by now. So that's something else we have to do. But I also want to make a big note and just kind of underscore a lot of the efforts of the beach safety staff. This is our second consecutive year with no major water-related incidents and no drownings. So kudos to the beach safety staff on that. We're gonna run into department updates. We start off with the Building Department. As we can tell here, as of eleven-thirty, these are the number of permits that we have issued, as well as the fees that are collected. This is some of that offsetting revenue that we collect. These are our zoning and building permits issued for eleven-thirty. There's a breakdown of our twenty twenty-four code enforcement actions. We did issue one hundred and sixty-one municipal civil infractions for a variety of reasons. We did issue four stop work orders, and we did initiate four circuit court complaints. I would say that we have also initiated one thousand three hundred and thirty-six other contacts, which is courtesy notices and warning letters. You may know that you get two letters before you get a citation. That means we're trying to give folks the opportunity to come into compliance, but this also underscores the need for, when you're going to property enforcement with circuit court, you'd need a number of notices so that people, so the court will understand that you've made every attempt to notify. And that's just something I've learned with working with Van Buren County is that you have to show a number of notices have been sent and received. Here we have our twenty twenty-four STR code enforcement actions. As noted, we have one hundred and seventeen documented warnings. We had nineteen municipal civil infractions issued. We did have three complaints dismissed. So this was as of eleven-thirty of two thousand twenty-four. This also, this next slide breaks down the number of, or the STR enforcements by category. By far, it looks like the most, the largest category was the certificate not posted. The second largest category was the unregistered at nineteen percent. But these kind of explain agent unavailable, no local agent listed, or others. This twenty twenty-four STR hotline complaints, we go into the nature of the complaints behind them, as well as the number of resolved complaints versus invalid complaints. And this ties back to the sheet that we had looked at before, coming from the STR hotline. City Clerk. City Clerk facilitated over fifty people to become certified and scheduled to work on Election Day, that's quite a, that's quite a lot. She completed her final year at the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, which is a three-year clerks institute, and received the Michigan Professional Clerk certification. Congratulations, Megan. She also continued to navigate through the changes of proposal two with the, from the twenty twenty-two November general election. And she continues to work with the county clerk, Susie Rome, and other municipal clerks to establish and work the early voting site for the twenty twenty-four elections. We, she implemented procedures for the early tabulation of absentee ballots in accordance with updated Michigan election laws. She's been very proficient in the community outreach, working with young professionals, Chamber of Commerce ambassador, National Blueberry Festival Board, and Women Who Care. This is the number of FOIA's that we've received year-to-date, going back to twenty eighteen. As you can tell, we've got about one forty-two this year as of twelve-thirteen, so last Friday. Voter turnout was fantastic this year, looking at the general election. Two thousand four hundred and seventy-nine out of three thousand seven thirty-nine voted in the general election. And this graph kind of explains like the different engagements. I also think it's been amazing that Megan sent out nearly double the amount of ballots that she sent for the presidential primary election this, the spring, or rather, this early February, is that correct? So she sent out twelve hundred forty ballots, received eleven ninety back. So that's one person doing a lot of that work before the election inspectors even get to get in there. So kudos, Megan. Moving into customer service, the customer service department is dedicated to the city's residents and visitors and staff by providing customer service and helping for setting up accounts and taking questions. We have three ladies up there, Karen, Kristen, and Miranda. Kristen has just been with us about a month. Most of the customer service transactions types are going to be setting up new accounts, setting work orders, and setting up payment plans. But over fifty-four thousand payments were received and processed by the customer service department in twenty twenty-four. This is an increase of about over two thousand eight hundred from twenty twenty-three. We do receive payments at the front counter and in the night deposit box and daily mail, but by far, the majority of the payments that we do receive are mostly online or via email. So while we do have a number of face-to-face interactions, our digital transactions continue to outperform traditional phone and face-to-face. Economic development, we are continuing to work with LMC to develop a work training program for Marine Technical Program. One thing that we've been very fortunate is to have Gold Lake Marine here to take over the all-seasons marina, but they have also reached out to us and said they really do need to find marine techs that are able to work on the boats and keep our recreational harbor viable. So we're working to move that along and encourage that program any way we can. Recently, the LDFA sold property that it had held to WR Grace to help facilitate continued expansion efforts. If you're not aware, WR Grace recently completed a thirty-million-dollar expansion where they added more components to their site. And with the sale of the property of the LDFA to Grace, we're hoping to see another major expansion on that site, hopefully bringing back R and D. We continue to work with our local businesses and have routine site visits, checking in, touching base, finding out what they need, if there's something that we can get them. We have had some businesses change hands, so we want to make sure that we're here facilitating anything that those businesses may need as they're starting, as they're taking over our local business. We still continue to work with the South Haven Regional Business Hub. I understand that they're going to be rescheduling their pitch, and then, of course, working with the Young Professionals Group. Finance Department by Fund, we've got some changes here, but of course, we had a very nice and in-depth discussion by Doug Vredaveld. So we can talk about some of these numbers, but I think the audit kind of talks better about our fiscal year from last year. Where we spend a majority of our money is obviously police and fire, that's our public safety. The other part is general government, and then it breaks down from other parts to that. We see debt service, we see capital outlay, we see roads, and other public safety. Revenue is by fund, the taxes that we've been collecting, as well as licenses and permits. Not as much money coming from federal government versus state government, but there's year-over-year changes that are pretty normal. And unsurprisingly, a majority of our money does come from taxes, property taxes specifically. Last year, as Doug mentioned, we did receive the GFOA certificate for achieving excellence in financial reporting. We're looking forward to having this audit that we've just received today to receive that same award. We would have had that, I think, now for a consecutive of over twenty-two years. And this is the slideshow, or this part of the slide that Mayor Scott Smith used to love. But this really kind of takes a dollar and shows you how much of it's used by the city and other units. So we collect the taxes for a number of components, such as the library, senior services, Van Buren ISD, and the school system. Of this dollar bill, only a quarter of it, less than a quarter of it, is held by the city. So twenty-five percent of the taxes, which kind of starts around right there over, that's what the city keeps to run the different functions of this government. The rest, this middle column, goes to the counties, Alleghen and Van Buren proportionately. Then you have the library, you have senior services, and then you have LMC. Here's your South Haven Public Schools, and that could be a variety of either debt or operating. And then you have the state education tax, that's six mils that goes right to the state of Michigan. And then you have the Van Buren ISD. So this, everything from here over goes out to the different taxing jurisdictions, and this is what the city keeps to run your government. Human Resources, we have four open positions right now. We're looking for liemen, journeyman, and information clerk. We're looking always for police officers. We've got two openings right now. We have ninety-nine current employees, eighty-one of them full-time, eighteen part-time or seasonal. This year, we hired twelve full-time or part-time employees. That included the Assistant City Manager. That included the assistant city manager, the civil engineer, planning and zoning assistant, and others. This year alone, we hired fifty-two seasonal workers in twenty twenty-four. Staff and training leadership. We've, we had, this year, we had a fire drill. We want to make sure that we're doing our safety inspections. We also held our annual leadership retreat to learn more and to give more education and training to our leaders here in the government. We also participated in a learning management system and had some mandatory trainings for all city staff, which included anti-discrimination awareness and prevention, recognizing sexual harassment, embracing change at work, and team communication. We also work with Pine Rest to do quarterly seminars, as well as employee health. And we can, we participate in some of those quarterly seminars. As I said, we had our city hall fire drill. We had the best weather for that. It turned out to be raining or snowing or anything like that. We have also changed over to a different timekeeping module. And again, we have MERS planning retirement so that our staff know what they're doing and how they're going to plan for the future, and of course, enrolling in benefits. We do have some projects that Kim Wise and HR has been undertaking. One of them is a timekeeping software that we just got started with a couple of years ago, has been bought out, so we're now changing over to a new timekeeping software, which means a lot of bugs working out with all that software. So we've been doing that implementation of that new software system. We've recently also been working with Pontifex for a compensation study that city council approved the proposal for. And I do want to really give Kim Wise a shout out. She recently completed the Michigan Municipal League's sixteen fifty Women in Leadership Program. This is a program that's designed to encourage more women to get involved with local government and to become those leadership positions. And the sixteen fifty kind of shows that for every, there's a, there's a dearth of a number of women who are working in local government and leadership positions. So kudos to Kim for doing that. It's a fantastic program. I, I've had the chance to take it, and it's fantastic. We had the seasonal job fair this year to get more workers, and this year, we saw a lot of turnover, so we're going to be looking at those seasonal jobs. But we also worked with career expos at LMC to, again, facilitate hiring. We continue to work with our DEI initiatives, and we have an ongoing partnership with IPES. Kim gave a presentation at the AAUW this year, and we also are looking through the DEI lens when we are posting positions. We have some upcoming projects for human resources and payroll, some that are outside of our control. In twenty twenty-four, we are looking at, or we have been looking at, and we are, will continue to look in twenty twenty-five, is changes with the Michigan Earn Sick Time Act. Those are some changes that will affect not only the city government, but really any small business owner. The Social Activities Committee has been very successful in putting on the Second Annual Touch a Truck. We also did a very good job with the Public Service Recognition Week, as well as our upcoming Holiday Pot Look. HR and payroll services were provided to SHAEs. They do payroll for all sixty-four full-time and paid-on-call employees. They also handle the benefits for MERS retiring insurance, benefit audits for nineteen full-time employees. We also do payroll and HR services for the Memorial Library for their three full-time employees and their benefits, and the six full-time employees for the South Haven Housing Commission. We also have been assisting with SHAR on the SHPS, on the Recreation Director position. Information technology is an internal service. They work, not only do we contract out with two municipalities, we also work internally to provide IT services for all the component units here in the city. And they've had a number of requests for service, but, and about a two percent increase over two thousand two. This is our IT folks. Phil Poole is our director, and he oversees the, I hesitate to call it beach parking now, it's just Parking Division, as it is so more high-tech than it was, what it used to be. So Phil oversees that. We've maintained our contract for IT services with the City of New Buffalo and South Haven Charter Township, and we're prepared to move to an online streaming service to YouTube in twenty twenty-five. We're also working on new fiber optic cable to the ice rink office, and we continue with security upgrades. The marinas have continued to have small, I wouldn't say small, but continuous improvement and and projects. There's always something going on down there, so we have the reinforced railing, improved amenities, and a number of repairs. This is the customer service response from the boaters, and looked like sixty-two percent rated as excellent. And for those who wanted to see more improvement, we'll be working on that. The police department, we have seventeen police officers, currently two sergeants, three detectives, eleven patrol, and one forensics. We do have support staff, which includes our IC supervisor, our full-time information center clerks. We do have three paid-on-call, paid-on-call clerks and two crossing guards. The calls for service in twenty twenty-four, just under, just over five thousand. And citations of warnings are a little bit down, so we're just over one thousand one The number of complaints for twenty twenty-four are pretty commensurate, about twenty thirty-eight for the year so far. We did have a number of officers receive unit awards. Officer Kevin Wildy for the Professional Excellence Award, and Officers Eric Garcia and Cooper Carnes for the Life Saving Award for their shift in deploying an AED and saving life during a critical emergency. The police department, this is all, this is all of the staff that were here prior to our recent changes with Chief Thompson leaving. SHAEs calls for service are are increasing, as you can see, year-over-year. We are looking at a total of two thousand six hundred and ninety calls, both fire and EMS for twenty twenty-four, estimated, I want to say, in early, either early December. SHAEs response, we have seventeen career firefighters and paramedics, two career firefighter EMT basics, and thirty paid-on-call members. Their cadet program seems to be expanding, so that's very nice to see. They have a number of pieces, I'm sorry, seventeen pieces of apparatus and cover ninety-seven square miles, providing fire suppression and advanced life support EMS. The average response time to the city of South Haven in twenty twenty-four was three minutes and forty-eight, three minutes forty-eight seconds. That's very good. We continue to work with South Haven City, South Haven, I'm sorry, Geneva Township and Casco Township as those members of the Fire Authority Board. SHAEs fire prevention, they had about three to four hundred kids at that event, was very nice. They did a push-in of their new apparatus truck. SHAEs appreciation for twenty twenty-four, James D. Quinn was the firefighter of the year, and the leadership award was Ron Ridley, who recently retired. SHAEs inspection, they did three hundred and thirty-nine fire pre-plans, three hundred and sixty-five fire code inspections, eight hundred and two short terminal inspections, eighty-two, eighty-two food truck or food vendor inspections, two hundred and thirty smoke alarm installations, and eighty-six CO detector installations. And that is the conclusion of part two.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions? Mary?
Yeah. Just, I just want to reiterate a couple of things that, when I was talking with Kate. So I thought she should have given more shout-out for the trail side. There's been a lot of work the last year redoing the brownfield plans that we approved, removing the old ones, and that was beginning, I have no doubt that that would have been an impediment to continuing development. So kudos to the staff who got those through. And with the EPA grant, you know, a lot of that work for filing was in twenty twenty-three. We reap the benefits now, and, and our new assistant city manager has the benefit of not only finding his legs, but pushing this through, and that's great that the RFP got sent out, and we're waiting for that, so I'm looking forward to some good things for For, let's see, for the enforcement things, I do appreciate trying to make sure things, you know, do comply, especially for short-term rentals and zoning compliance. I know for zoning compliance, there's been an outstanding inquiry from residents from February for a matter in Ward Three, and, and I look forward to some resolution on that. And also for enforcement, you know, the Granicus Report was provided to us, and I did a semi-deep dive on that. And I would, I'm looking forward to some clarification with our new ordinances that we're working on, because I did find a couple of situations where the report said it was invalid, but if you looked at it further, there actually was an issue, it got resolved, and I thought resolved would have been a more appropriate word. So I look forward to some clarity and transparency to make sure that the issues that are, that have caused the the need to relook at our zoning ordinances, to get the balance that we've been striving to get, don't fall by the wayside with enforcement. And I appreciate that there's discretion in in what you pursue, but we need to make sure that that's used sparingly to ensure that our laws are enforced as intended. Yeah, I think that's, but no, great. There's a lot of great stuff in there, so thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Any questions? I was wondering, how do you explain the numbers on the FOIA's that they doubled over last year's numbers?
Go for it. That includes the numbers from the portal, which in twenty twenty-four, we also started using for the police department as well. So in prior years, we weren't tracking how many the police department received on a separate situation, but now, in the portal, they are being counted towards the general count for FOIA's received.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further comments, we are going to move on. Thank you so much for that report. And now, citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda, and you have three minutes.
Dan Agnello, nine sixty-four Everett Parkway. Finally, we had a short meeting, so I could finally talk, and I want to stay here until ten-thirty in the last couple of meetings. I want to thank, do want to thank Mike for getting on this RFP, for a consultant to help with environmental, but, and I'm, and on Trail Side Two, like Mary mentioned, there's still some problems with the containment of of the contaminated soil. And like I indicated, I want to get on record, because this will come back to me. I know people watching this meeting will come back somehow through the back grapevine, and I'll hear about this. That's why I'm doing it right now, because this had happened before. You know, you saw my email that the developer called the police on me because, because I talked to one of his workers, that's a mortal sin, and number two, I supposedly trespassed on his property, okay? And, and I went on contaminated soil, I walked on contaminated soil to pull off his tarps on all the contaminated soil. The police officer came out and said, I said, "I've never trespassed on his property, ever." The only time I talked to one of his workers was I was driving my bike on Indiana. Two of the gentlemen were setting up their GPS coordinates, and I asked them, "Hey, do you have a due care plan?" And they said, "Yes, it's somewhere," and that's it. And so the police officers said, "Why, then why am I out here if you're not trespassing?" I said, "Well, because," he said, "I don't know the history." I said, "Well, it's because of all the problems we had in Elkenburg, and he's harassed the citizens three or four times in the meetings, accused us the same thing, you've heard it, of taking the tarps off, off the piles and everything." And I got a copy of the police report. I have a copy of the body camera, the video, okay? And so if any problems in the future, but I want us to get back to them that, you know, residents, I'm not going to take this harassment from a developer. He should not even be doing this. He's had, still have problems with the contaminated soil. There's the two areas right now.
Give one minute.
Thank you. That still did not have cell fences, and that's the two areas that I was talking about for the last two months, and there's still been no action on it. Now, I did, the reason those two cell fences are there right now is because I contacted the drain officer, the drain engineer, whatever it was, thanks to information from Mike Landis. And then I get back over there, and there's cell fences on Indiana, and there's a cell fence on Elkenburg. But they didn't finish a cell fence on the corner of Everett Parkway and Abel, and they didn't finish it on Abel in Indiana, and it's still sitting there. And it's warm weather right now, and they could do it, but nothing's being done. So that's where we're at. Thank you.
Lisa Crew PRs, five sixty-one Indiana Avenue. I know I have sent several letters or several emails to city council and others about short-term rental property signs in the area. I am in Ward One, where there's a significant number of them. So I'm going to keep mentioning this until we have our STR Code of Ordinance published, and hopefully, this will be included in it. Many of us have requested the discontinued use of permanent-looking short-term rental property identification and advertising signs in our neighborhoods. With the new STR Code of Ordinance revisions, short-term rentals are identified as commercial properties. They are able to advertise online and all the places where people advertise their commercial businesses. They don't need big signs in our residential neighborhoods. This is an obsolete notion. It is reasonable and agreeable to many residents to settle for a small bandit sign like the size of a political sign, up against the house or next to the registration in the window. The place for this regulation is in the STR Code of Ordinance, not in the regular zoning ordinance, where things like for-sale signs are considered and regulated, or signs like I previously spoke of. We want, in the STR Code of Ordinance, verbiage that is going to directly refer to the STR signs for the properties. Thank you.
Anyone else?
How you doing? My name is Daniel Goodwin, and I represent two oh one Center Street, Save Cave Barber Shop. And I just want to, I guess, like, like last week, I'm new to this, just seeking some, I got some questions, and I, you can know where I work at if you want to answer some of them, or I can stay after, but first, I want to say thank you for sending the ladies by to inquire about the sign being removed at Save Cave. I appreciate it. And second, I want to know how, what process we take now that I hear we got a new chief, you know, to getting to know him a little better and seeing what he about and what he on, and kind of acclimating him to our community and stuff like that. All love him. And third thing, I want to know who, like, I don't know if it's Ward One down there on the south side, who's responsible for, you know, caring for that side of town, like, you know, the parks, like, in the wintertime, like, during the holiday season, like, doing the trees and stuff like that, like you do downtown? You know, who, I mean, who, how do, how do it come up? Who does what parks and what zones and stuff like that, or how much get done to them? Because down at Elkenberg Park, we got one, I mean, one tree with a little decorations on it, it's nice, but we got a lot of trees in the park and a lot more other stuff that I think will make it look even nicer. And, but not just with decorating the holiday themes, like stuff like Touch a Truck, so on, stuff like that, and festivals. So stuff like down there, and then festivals that go on all over South Haven, like, in the parks, like, during the summer times, and, you know, you get bands down here and stuff like that. Who, who, how do we determine who can do that? And I say that kind of like for, like, okay, I'm going to speak for us, our culture. You know, I came up in this community, I love this community, I think we got a lot to offer the community, you know, but I find I get a lot of roadblocks, okay, get a lot of roadblocks when it comes to, you know, trying to incorporate some of the things we like and love, you know, and to the summer, you know, and I, and I don't understand it. And, but, yeah, because we love to contribute to the community, and our culture is beautiful, and like to be on, displaying Incorporated. I mean, I think we could bring a lot to this city. I was born and raised here, you know, and, and I, and I don't understand, I want, I just would like an understanding on who has to, who is responsible for that area? Is it possible for us to get included in some of this stuff and all like that to make it better? You know, I see they got a lot for program revenue for the police and stuff, but them, getting them down to our neighborhood to show love instead of just coming to lock us up, stuff like that. We want to see how we can build that relationship too, because it makes it all easier and better for us living around here in the long run.
Your time is up.
All right, thank you.
But I'll talk to you right after the meeting.
I'm George E. Brighton. I live at two fourteen Superior. I came here with concerns about the twenty eighteen master plan to ensure South Haven's I came here with concerns about the 2018 master plan to ensure South Haven's character. My first concern comes from how friends from Chicago with a South Haven second home taught me the meaning of being a good neighbor. When a mutual neighbor went into hospice care, the friends from Chicago opened the doors of their second home to the family of the friend in hospice. I know it's hard for owners of short-term rentals to match this neighborly concern because they don't live here and rarely spend enough time in their STRs to share in the lives of their neighbors. My second concern centers around the lack of doctors in South Haven. I permanently moved here in 2017, and I found it easy to get a general practitioner, a neurologist, a cardiologist, and a proctologist for needs. Now, none of the specialists are in South Haven, and I'm looking for my sixth general practitioner after previous ones left South Haven and were no longer covered by insurance. My last concern is directly related to the owners of short-term rentals. As all of you know, we had six inches of snow in the last two weeks, and that melted in the sun and then froze to ice due to low night temperatures and seventy-four mile-per-hour freezing wind gusts. Occasional shoveling or clearing snow from sidewalks could not keep the ice from covering them. As someone who walks a six-month-old puppy around the block four or five times a day, I am very concerned about walking on ice, and I blame absent STR owners on my block who are not present to shovel the snow, spread sand or salt to remove ice. To profit from South Haven summers, they must know and deal with South Haven winters. Madam Mayor, City Council, and Madam City Manager, it is time to maintain the character of South Haven. Enough four thousand square foot houses with seven bedrooms or seven-bedroom houses with six bathrooms have been permitted to be built. Have the courage to maintain the character of South Haven, help lower real estate costs to attract doctors, and please work to keep the sidewalks clear of ice even when we have unusual winter conditions, which we had in the last two weeks. It can be done, do it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, we are moving on to City Manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to bring attention to the fact that Governor Whitmer did recently send a statewide proclamation recognizing water and wastewater professionals, Workforce Week, which was December ninth to the fifteenth. We have a number of water and wastewater staff that work for the city, and they do a lot to make sure that our water and our wastewater go the right places and get to us cleanly and get back, delivered to our water sources clean. So I wanted to thank their efforts and all that they do. I also wanted to thank our city staff that participated and helped put together our end-of-the-year report. This is our chance to show the City Council, as well as the community, all the things that we do, and this is just but a slice. So I really think for, thank them for all their efforts in putting that together. We really have to move together as a team to really serve this community, and I think they do a fantastic job. Speaking of the new police chief, Kevin Swope, he will be here, his first day is January sixth, so we will have him here getting acclimated, getting a number of things, but it is my intent to get him out in the community and meeting a number of stakeholders. I also did want to thank Sergeant Pat Carlotta, who acted as our interim police chief. I think he did a fantastic job, and I really appreciated his leadership and his efforts during his time in that transitional period. He's not here tonight, he went to a concert for his band concert, so thank you for him. But we should be having the new chief here on just January sixth and getting out to the community. And I just wanted to say happy holidays, thank you for everybody, and hope you have a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you. Just go ahead.
Kate, I had a question for you. We got an email last week from Tom Renner, and he was expressing concerns about, you know, can we work, do more to share information about the power outage? And you shared a lot of information that the public might know. Could you talk about the power outage and what our staff battled and how hard they worked?
Sure. Well, we did have a very unusual event that we had with the, one, not only with the snow that came down, which was between twelve and fourteen inches, but the seventy-five mile-an-hour winds that we had here, and of course, that was mostly gusts, but when the, when the winds get over thirty miles an hour, if we have pole breaks or anything that requires us to go up into a lift truck to repair those lines, we cannot do it. So BYORSHA, and of course, good operating standards, you do not go up into the air unless the winds are under thirty miles an hour. So that's one of the issues that impaired our ability to get the power back on. We had a number of issues that are going on. We had two pole breaks, one in a clear area, so we could get to that, but we were impaired by the winds. But we had a second area where we'd have to clear almost a swath of trees to get back to repair the pole. And happily, Holland Municipal was able to come down and help us with a particular tool that we did not have to clear a bunch of trees to get back there. But the third item was, there was a line on fire in front of Woodhams, and to fix that, we had to cut the power to an area, and we could not repair that until we had a number of other things that had to occur first, and of course, we had the wind issue. So there was a number of things that were going on, and we had a nixle that went out, we had a press release, but in talking with Tom Renner and explaining all those things, that would have been good information for us to share, not only with the Information Center, but also with the public. So we're going to be working as a staff team to kind of work on how to give those regular updates, even if they're saying, "We're not sure, it could be six to eight hours." At least giving a timeframe as best we know at that time, so that people have an understanding, and if the information's out there, maybe not overwhelming the Information Center clerks who are just, you know, trying to pick up the phone and just say, "I don't know, I'll have more information for you later." Lastly, we are working on a software rollout, hopefully at the end of next year, 2025, with the automated metering that we're going to have going out there that are being installed now. These, they're called AMIs or automated metering, so we should have them kind of uploading to the system. So if there was an outage, we would be able to see it, as well as the homeowner could see that, "I'm not the only house that's out of my block, there's other things going on." So if you've ever been a customer of DTE consumers, there's maps that you can see on that show if there's a widespread outage, and that's the idea, is that we're going to have that rolled out here at the end of next year, so that anybody who is a customer and has an automated meter, we could see not only if their power's on or off, but they can also go in and see their power usage over the year.
Okay. So if I hear you correctly, our people really had their hands full.
We had a lot of things going on, Jeff, yeah.
And that you, the city staff has learned from that, and we're going to get better at it.
That's correct.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
George?
No questions.
Do you have questions?
Yes. When the zoning ordinance had come up to us initially on November eighteenth, there was a list of items that the Planning Commission had wanted the City Council to look at and confirm to send back to them, and that list was in that packet and did not make it back for the City Council to look at. So maybe that could be something for January.
We'll see. We got, we have a full slate of stuff coming up, so we'll see what has to come back.
And along with communication, you know, I think Dan already acknowledged the information that Michael Sunday out on Trailside, you know, he did send out the environmental consultant report to one named individual, but then it appeared several people were blind copied, and I think those types of communications that are general public record, that have general public desire to have the knowledge, would be much easier just uploaded to the brownfield site with the email push so that everybody gets it and we don't have, and it's readily available. It just is more transparent and more efficient to send that out. Also, I had talked to you, Kate, I've raised this before, you know, City Council all has our city-issued email, but the Planning Commission and ZBA do not. And so if someone has a comment for either of those bodies, they send it to the staff, and then staff forwards it on. I think it would be very helpful if staff could either blind copy the sender on the email to the Planning Commissioner or ZBA, because then the sender understands that it's been forwarded, or loop back with the sender. That takes the extra stuff, that's why I suggested the former, and just confirm that it had been sent. Just, I think that would engage the community more, be more transparent, and hopefully facilitate communication. I do know that sometimes emails get lost in the junk folder and are not seen, and if they're sent in shortly before the meeting, they don't always make it to the body before the meeting. And just for notice, when, you know, I would, I think it would be very helpful if we could have, I know you know what the agenda is, but when things are being added for special meetings, trainings, when you're looking at different dates, if we could have a little heads-up so, for scheduling, because things come up, and it would just be nice to know when we'll have extra meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that feedback.
Okay. Mayor and Councilperson's comments?
George?
I just want to thank everyone that came here today, and also everyone that was watched online. I continually get feedback that there's a lot of people that watch these meetings online, and I appreciate everyone out there watching. Based on the end-of-the-year report, it is great to see the many good things that happened in the city this year, so thank you for that, and thanks to all the city staff. And lastly, happy holidays.
Thank you. Mary, anything else?
So something else to consider for a workshop for us, you know, there's been a lot of social media that has come out following the November twenty-first Planning Commission meeting, and I reached out to Kate after that with regard to guidelines for liaisons to various boards, and Kate didn't address the guidelines, I don't think there are any, but did confirm that the City Council via resolution appoints the liaison to the Planning Commission. There appears to be a differing in opinions of the roles of the City Council liaisons, and I think it would be helpful to have a workshop to discuss that. Based on what I've witnessed and experienced with some of the Planning Commission, what I think happens is, you know, the staff report pretty much sums up what the City, the Planning Commission did and presents that to the City Council. The liaison is there to provide guidance to the Planning Commission when something's sent to this, to them from the City Council. The liaison can also help explain matters further at City Council if the staff is unable to explain them. And at the City Council, the liaison of all the boards, we're wearing the elected official hat, and we must also respect our constituents at this point in time, and we do strive to reach a balance, and I just think a workshop would help with transparency and having everybody moving in the same direction. I would like to thank the City Council members who supported the changes from the December second for the new zoning ordinance. I do, I'm looking, I'm looking forward to what the changes those will bring. This past week, I do want to honor a couple individuals who unfortunately passed away, B. Worschowski and Steve Tolan. I know they were very active in our community, and they will be greatly missed, and I just want to keep their family and friends in our thoughts and prayers. I do want to thank the DPW. I saw the notice that went out, that leaves will be picked up if possible. I know that storm hit us unexpectedly, and I know they got out after some of the snow melted, which was greatly appreciated, because I know that the roads were getting blocked by some of them. I too like to thank everyone who came and spoke, and also who watches, I do get feedback also, and I want to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday and New Year, and if you have a real tree, please water it daily, and a big shout-out to Shea's who posted that. Let's keep everybody safe.
Good point on the tree. Just a note, Rich Green, I sent an email last week, I read it, I got it, read it, and we got a packet left on my desk, so Rich, thank you for that, I'll take a look at that when I have a chance. Just want to say, job very well done to Michelle Argu on the budget, and job well done, and a big thank you to Pat Carlotta for acting as our interim police chief, and, you know, thank you to the DPW and everyone that worked on that power outage, that I was one of those people, the power was out for eighteen hours. It was fine, we did okay. And then finally, yeah, Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy Kwanzaa. Oh, I'm brain fart. Hanukkah, that's the one, it was on the tip of my tongue. Thanks, Kate, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you. I want to thank Lisa Crew PRs for encouraging people to email us about Kate's performance as City Manager. We heard from a lot of people, and I think almost eighteen community leaders who just had glowing remarks about Kate's performance as our City Manager, and that made it an easy decision for us to, as you see, unanimously give her a raise. We're lucky to have her as our City Manager, and I value her knowledge and her professionalism, and she is, just has so much experience, and her past education makes her ideal, and we're very lucky to have another year of your leadership. So thank you, and thank you for our amazing city staff. We really have a great bunch of people who are keeping our city running. So everything good about our city with upcoming holidays, it's because we have a well-oiled machine that is run by our city staff, so, and also happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, and Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you for everything, and have a Happy New Year too. We'll see you soon in January. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.